Counsel, please come to order. We do have a quorum at seven P.M. and we'll enter into our Tuesday, October eighth, regular council meeting. In just a minute, I'll ask everyone to stand. We'll be led in an opening prayer invocation by Park and Recs Director Tony Almelo. And the pledges be led first in the American flag and then the Texas flag by Councilmember Monger. Please stand.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the privilege of meeting today. We ask that you bless us abundantly and give us the wisdom to lead with integrity. Please bless our citizens, elected officials, staff, and our first responders who diligently work diligently for our safety and our well-being. Father, bless the work that we have done and the unseen work that we will do. In Jesus's name, we pray. Amen.
Please join me in honoring our nation's flag with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And please join me in honoring the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
May be seated. It is time for citizens' presentations. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on any matter, whether or not it is posted on the agenda. The council is not permitted to take action on or discuss any presentations made to the council at this time concerning an item not listed on the agenda. The council will hear presentations on specific agenda items prior to the council addressing those items. You may speak up to four minutes or a time limit determined by the mayor or presiding officer. To speak during this item, you must complete the speaker's form that includes the topics of your statement. Topics of presentations, excuse me, topics of presentation should be limited to matters over which the council has authority. So I have two people at this time that have signed up to speak. First one is Lisa West. Ms. West, if you'd come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and then you may speak. And if you have someone else with you, they can do the same thing.
Good evening, Mayor. My name is Lisa West with Community Storehouse. We have some folders for you. Community Storehouse is located at 12001 Katy Road in Fort Worth.
Yes, you may hand them out.
So we came this evening. Thank you for having us. Wanted to, some of you are very familiar with Community Storehouse, others not so much, but we did want to take the opportunity to share who we are with you very quickly. We are a children's charity that serves the low-income children and families within the school districts of Northwest, Carroll, and Keller. So about that three hundred and nine square miles, there are about twelve thousand children that qualify for our services, and we, in the calendar year of two thousand and eighteen, served almost five thousand of them with a hundred and seven thousand services. Now, for Trophy Club, that winds up being about four hundred and twenty-three children in about a hundred households. So what we do is we step in to provide educational programs and wellness programs for these children and their families, mostly dealing with the resource gap that these children face when schools are not able to step in, whether that be after-school, on the weekends, or during school breaks. Our after-school programs range from book clubs in many schools, and they also go into programs that we have in our own facility on weekends, little pop-ups that include opportunities for both the children and their families to come. We do a lot of work around literacy, knowing that third grade is the standard for knowing when and how children are reading on level, so that for us is a big key. We know that we can put all of the books, we can, into children's hands, but if they are not fed and if they are not clean, then they're not learning. And that is really what our goal is, is to make these children successful in the classroom. So we also partnered with businesses and churches to provide food for these families, whether it's children with snacks on the weekends fighting food insecurities, or whether it is for their parents' monthly food intake and things that they have within the household. We also provide opportunities with dignity closets to have hygiene supplies given to these schools. So I wanted to share that with you and let you know that we are working with your citizens and your families and your children to make sure that these children are being served in Trophy Club. Thank you for the opportunity. We would love to have you guys come out into our facility to see what we're doing and how we're serving your children. Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming this evening. The next person who signed up to speak is Jeffrey Rynsbottom. Jeffrey, you want to come to the microphone, identify yourself, state your address, and you get the floor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jeffrey Rynsbottom, I live at 2826 Exeter Drive here in Trophy Club. I'm here in concern with the parking ordinance from three A.M. to five A.M., which is enforced by our police department. And I'm not against this ordinance, I just think there should be some adjustments. It was, I believe, originated so they could clean the streets during that time, way back when we were around two thousand citizens. I live on the west side of Trophy Club where there's great big houses on tiny little lots with small garages. We can currently fit one car in the garage, two in the driveway, and I have four drivers, four cars. So I'm stuck when my kids are home from college parking one vehicle on the street. Well, I have received a citation. I'm not here to complain about that. It is against the law. But I do think there should be options available. For instance, when my kids are home from college for two days, maybe be able to buy a two-day permit. Or spring break, seven to ten days. Or summer, ninety days, which is what we currently have, is one permit of ninety days, up to ninety days, that is, and that's at a certain fee. This could be many times during the year. My kids are currently coming home twice a month, basically, and then you want to add Thanksgiving, spring break, Christmas, et cetera. So I've put something together that if, when I'm finished, I'd like to hand to you guys so you can have a little reference and maybe get this on the agenda to get changed in the future.
All right, thank you, sir. If you want to give that to Holly, our city secretary, at the end, she can get it to us. Thank you so very much. Holly, did anybody else sign up?
No, Mayor.
He can get us that later if you want to. All right, we will then move on to item number one under announcement and reports. Receive interim town manager Carol's update and provide input regarding the following: service award ceremony and town manager reception. Yes?
Good evening, Mayor and council. Tomorrow, I'm sorry, on Monday, October the fourteenth, we're going to be honoring some of our employees, some of our tenured employees with a breakfast Monday morning. We have some members of our department that have been here for five years, and fifteen years, and even twenty years. So this list includes Sergio Vargas, who's been here for five years, Thad Johnson, who's been here for five years as well. We have Luis Gonzalez for five years, and Samuel Barron for five years. Mike Pastor has now been with us for fifteen years. Mike's been back there in the booth a while and making sure I.T. is running the way it's supposed to. And Tony Simmons in the police department has been with us for twenty years. This year is his twentieth anniversary. So we just want to honor those individuals and make sure that they understand that we're watching the excellent work that they do and the excellent work that they do for our citizens. So we're going to honor them with breakfast on Monday. We also hope that citizens will join us on Tuesday, October the twenty-ninth, at H.G. Supply for a meet and greet for our new town manager, Steve Norwood. Steve Norwood comes to Trophy Club with many years of municipal leadership and experience outside of Texas and inside of Texas. We're excited for him to join the team. The meet and greet will be at H.G. Supply between five and seven-thirty P.M. on the twenty-ninth, and all of Trophy Club is invited to join us. So we hope that we have many citizens take the opportunity to come out and meet Mr. Norwood.
Thank you, sir. Anybody have any questions of Mr. Wade? All right, thank you very much. We are down to the consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the town council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion of these items. If discussion is needed, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Does any member of council wish to remove an item?
Motion to approve consent agenda items two through five?
Two through five.
Second.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tim Jensen, seconded by Councilmember Fleury. All in favor, show your hands. Item number six, consider to take appropriate action regarding a proclamation of the town council recognizing October twenty nineteen as bullying prevention month in Trophy Club and providing an effective date. At this time, I would recognize Councilmember Fleury for a read the proclamation and to make a motion.
Town of Trophy Club, Texas, proclamation number twenty nineteen dash twenty-one. Whereas bullying is repeated physical, verbal, sexual, and/or emotional harm or intimidation intentionally directed at a person or a group of people, and whereas bullying occurs in neighborhoods, playgrounds, schools, and through technologies such as the internet and cellphones, and whereas bullying is the most common form of violence affecting millions of U.S. children and adolescents, with twenty-eight percent of students in grade six through twelve having experienced bullying, approximately thirty percent of students admitting to bullying others, and over seventy percent of young people say they have seen bullying in their schools, and whereas children who bully are at a greater risk of engaging in more serious violent behaviors, and children who witness bullying often feel less secure, more fearful, and intimidated, and whereas researchers and child psychologists believe educating our children while they are young helps them to cope with adversity, trauma, tragedy, threats, and significant source of stress, and whereas more than fifty-five percent of bullying situations stop within ten seconds when a peer intervenes and school-based bullying prevention programs decrease bullying by up to twenty-five percent, and whereas studies show adults can help prevent bullying by talking about bullying, modeling kindness and respect, and encouraging children to get help when they and/or others are involved in bullying. Now therefore I, Mayor C. Nick Sanders, in conjunction with the town council of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, to hereby proclaim October twenty nineteen as Bullying Prevention Awareness Month. The Town of Trophy Club schools, students, parents, recreation programs, religious institutions, and community organizations are encouraged to engage in a variety of awareness and prevention activities designed to make our communities safer for all children and adolescents. I move to pass proclamation number twenty nineteen dash twenty-one as read.
Second. So I have a second by Monger. All in favor, show your hands. It is unanimous. And so I think we have a community service officer that's going to receive this tonight? Are they here?
Yes.
Yes, okay. You want to come up to the microphone? We're going to get a quick picture. Just like, I want to move this down, so. Now it's over here by the black. council recognizing October twenty nineteen as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Trophy Club and providing an effective date. Once again, I'd recognize Councilmember Fleury for reading the proclamation and motion.
Town of Trophy Club, Texas, proclamation number twenty nineteen dash twenty-two. Whereas breast cancer is the most common cancer among women in the United States, accounting for thirty percent of newly diagnosed cancers, and whereas in twenty nineteen, about two-hundred thousand six, two-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand six-hundred new cases of invasive breast cancer will be diagnosed in women, and two-thousand-six-hundred-and-seventy cases will be diagnosed in men in the United States, and whereas every two minutes, one case of breast cancer is diagnosed in a woman in the United States, and one in eight women will be diagnosed with breast cancer in her lifetime. And whereas mammography and X-ray of the breast is recognized as the single most effective method of detecting breast changes long before physical symptoms can be seen or felt, early detection and approved treatment is believed to have significantly reduced the number of deaths caused by breast cancer, and whereas researchers, scientists, and numerous nonprofit organizations are dedicated to discovering the cure for breast cancer. During the month of October, we acknowledge the extraordinary commitment and effort invested in this cause, and whereas we recognize that over two and a half million Americans are breast cancer survivors that give us hope of a better future. Now therefore I, Mayor C. Nick Sanders, in conjunction with the town council of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, to hereby proclaim October twenty nineteen as Breast Cancer Awareness Month, extending our deepest respect for survivors and those advocating for prevention and a cure. I move to pass proclamation number twenty nineteen dash twenty-two as read.
And a second by Bone. Counsel, all in favor, show your hands. It is unanimous. It does pass. We have Sarah Hamp here tonight to receive the proclamation. Sarah, if you would come up front. Did you want to say anything about this topic or why you're here?
Yeah, if you don't mind.
Please, go ahead.
Just very quickly, first, thank you so much to Alicia for inviting me here and for all of you for having me. So my name is Sarah Hamp, and I am a breast cancer survivor that lives here in the area. When I was diagnosed in February of twenty eighteen, one of the things that was really lacking for me was social support, having, you know, a group of other women that were local to this area that were going through the same thing that I could connect with. And so now that I've gotten through, you know, my treatments and I'm at a point where I'm ready to, you know, start making those connections, there's still just as nothing in this area. So I decided to post on Facebook and see if there were any other survivors in the area who would be interested in meeting up and seeing, you know, where we could go from there. So in a couple of days' time, I already have over twenty people in a private Facebook group that are survivors in our area, and I just really feel strongly that we should have that social support that doesn't currently exist. And so we already have our first meetup scheduled for this Saturday. It's at the Beauty Hive in Roanoke from four to six P.M. if there are any other survivors interested in joining us. And so I'm just really excited that I can provide that for other women who are going through the same thing, and that we can relate to each other and encourage and empower each other. So again, thank you so much for having me here tonight.
Thank you so much. Wade, right there.
We're going to get a real one now.
Now we're going to get a real picture.
And Sarah, the name of your group?
Thank you, Alicia. So because it all happened so quickly, I posted it and didn't have really any plans for what it was going to be or what it was going to be called, but we came up with the name The Pink Life. So for any, if you know any breast cancer survivors in our area, they can join the private group on Facebook, and that's where we'll post about future events.
So The Pink Life?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
council recognizing October twenty nineteen as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Trophy Club and providing an effective date. It's proclamation twenty nineteen dash twenty-three, and I would recognize Councilmember Fleury to read the proclamation and make a motion.
Town of Trophy Club, Texas, proclamation number twenty nineteen dash twenty-three. Whereas for the past thirty-nine years, Denton County Friends of the Family has provided compassionate, comprehensive services to those impacted by rape, sexual abuse, and domestic violence in the Denton community while partnering with the community to promote safety, hope, healing, justice, and prevention. And whereas by working together, shelters, affiliated programs, municipalities, and concerned individuals can change social attitudes about and the response to intimate partner violence. And whereas all persons have the right to live without fear, abuse, or oppression, and whereas one in three Texans will experience domestic violence in their lifetime. And whereas Denton County Friends of the Family received two-thousand-nine-hundred-and-seventy-four crisis calls from victims of domestic violence and provided nine-thousand-four-hundred-and-twelve days of emergency shelter to women and children in the past year. And whereas the Denton County Friends of the Family individuals and groups with over thirty-four thousand hours of services through counseling, advocacy, case management, and support services. And whereas domestic violence is not confined to any specific group of people, but affects people of all races, backgrounds, economic levels, education levels, family structures, ages, and religions. And whereas the crime of domestic violence violates members of our community's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity in the form of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, religious, and economic abuse. And whereas advocates, professionals, volunteers, and community members concerned with domestic violence will devote the month of October to raising awareness about the causes, interventions, and prevention of this devastating crime. Now therefore I, Mayor C. Nick Sanders, in conjunction with the town council of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, to hereby proclaim October twenty nineteen as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, reaffirming this town's commitment to ending domestic violence in our community. I move to approve proclamation twenty nineteen dash twenty-three as read.
Second. I have a second by Bone. Motion by Fleury. Any discussion? If there are none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It is unanimous. So is there someone to receive this with Friends of the Family Denton County here tonight? Hillary, is that the right name? I guess not. Okay, we'll get that to her then. All right, item number nine, consider to take appropriate action regarding a proclamation of the town council recognizing October sixth through twelve, twenty nineteen, as Fire Prevention Week in Trophy Club and providing an effective date. It's proclamation twenty nineteen dash twenty-four. Once again, I'd recognize Councilmember Fleury for a motion.
Town of Trophy Club, Texas, proclamation number twenty nineteen dash twenty-four. Whereas the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living and visiting the Town of Trophy Club, and whereas U.S. fire departments responded to three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand home fires in twenty seventeen, according to the NFPA, and whereas U.S. home fires resulted in two-thousand-six-hundred-and-thirty civilian deaths, and representing the majority, seventy-seven percent of all U.S. fire deaths, and whereas newer homes are built with lightweight materials that burn faster than older home constructions, and whereas many of today's products and furnishings produce toxic gases and smoke and burn, making it impossible to see and breathe within moments, and whereas these conditions contribute to a much smaller window of time for people to escape a home fire safely, with people having as little as one to two minutes to escape from the time the smoke alarm sounds, and whereas a home fire escape plan provides the skill set and know-how to quickly and safely escape a home fire situation, and whereas a home fire escape plan includes two exits from every room in the home, a path to the outside from each exit, smoke alarms in all required locations, and a meeting place outside where everyone in the home will meet upon exiting, and whereas home fire escape plans should be developed by all members of the household, and whereas practicing a home fire escape plan twice a year ensures everyone in the household knows what to do in a real fire situation, and whereas the Town of Trophy Club's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education, and whereas the Town of Trophy Club's residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes, and whereas the twenty nineteen Fire Prevention Week theme, Not Every Hero Wears a Cape, Plan and Practice Your Escape, effectively serves to educate the public about the vital importance of developing a home fire escape plan with all members of the household and practicing it twice a year. Now therefore I, Mayor C. Nick Sanders, in conjunction with the town council of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, to hereby proclaim October sixth through twelfth, twenty nineteen, as Fire Prevention Week, urging all people of Trophy Club to develop a home fire escape plan with all members of the household and practice it twice a year and to participate in the many public safety activities and efforts of Trophy Club's fire and emergency services during Fire Prevention Week, twenty nineteen. I move to pass proclamation number twenty nineteen dash twenty-four as read.
I have a second. Who said a second? Bone? All right, I have a motion by Fleury, a second by Bone. Any discussion? Seeing no one wishing to speak, all in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It is unanimous. So at this time, I would ask all of the members of our fire department that are present to come up to the podium. They didn't know they were going to do this. That's all the guys on the back row back here. And ladies. And what I want you to do is come up to the microphone. You can raise it because you're tall. Introduce yourself to the crowd, and we'll get everybody in a picture here in a moment. So raise the microphone, or bend down, either.
Kevin Arrington, firefighter, paramedic.
Gary Sipes, sea shift captain.
Sarah Stockstrom, firefighter, paramedic.
Brian Peters, firefighter, paramedic.
Eric Sampson, firefighter, paramedic.
Greg Booze, engineer, sea shift.
All right. For what you do, I just want to personally thank each of you for your dedication to Trophy Club. Many of you have been here many years. We really appreciate that. Some of you newer. Can't tell you how many times I get good comments from citizens when you've been there to help them and how much they appreciate that. And later in October, we have an open house, don't we? I can't remember the date for that. Nineteenth? The nineteenth. There we go. So the nineteenth, if you want to come to the fire station and tour the facility and bring your young children, they'll enjoy what's around there. So come and meet everybody. So let's get a picture, and then I'm going to ask Chief Arada to come up and the fact that we have a officer in town who is a resource officer for the school who just lost their home totally to a fire yesterday or today?
Last night.
Last night, to tell a little bit about it and about what we're doing as a community to help. So let's do this. Are you going to take it?
No.
Somebody has to.
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, can everybody see? Can we?
I'm good, I'm good.
If you can't see the camera, they can't see you. One, two. Back there. Let's go get a picture back. our fire chief and interim town manager to introduce himself. So if you want to come up and introduce yourselves, I won't exclude you from the fire department.
Gary Cochran, interim fire chief for two more weeks and fire marshal.
And Wade Carroll, fire chief. I'm very proud of this team. They do a great job.
Gary's done a great job as interim, and really Sarah Stockstrom that just left here has really done a great job of revamping our public education programs. We now have a little puppet show for the little kids, all the way up to kind of a live-action, interactive, educational thing for the older kids throughout the schools. And they're doing some things like Stop the Bleed for teachers, or teaching teachers how to use tourniquets and stop the bleed as well. So it's, it really turned out to be a great program. Gary's kind of led this thing over there while I've been out, and I've been very appreciative of that, and everybody's really stepped up, so we're proud of them.
Thank you, both of you. All right, chief?
Mayor and council, last night Officer Jeff Anillo, one of our SROs, three years ago, he worked at Medlin for a year. In the last two years, he's been our SRO at the high school. He and his family lost their house last night to a fire. Jeff, his wife, and his three kids are with family now, but we appreciate everything the community has done, council, and mayor, for your support. And right now, the town has done a tremendous job of showing support for him and providing gifts and donations, and we are still collecting that. We will for the next, obviously, week or two. So, and we're in the process of setting up a fund, GoFundMe page for him and his So, and we're in the process of setting up a fund, GoFundMe page for him and his family. So look for that here in the next day or so. But he's very appreciative of everything that's happened over the last twelve hours since that happened. So thank you very much, and thank you, the citizens of Trophy Club, and Keller and Roanoke for the support.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
And I believe right now in the interim, TCEVA.us is accepting donations on their site for the family, and you can drop off clothing, toys, items at our police department, our town hall, or our fire department. And if you're on the Byron Nelson High School PTSA page, there's also someone there that is willing to have drop off at their home. You can look up that address. And also, I think TCEVA will pick up things as well. So you have a variety of different avenues to help out Jeff, who we love so much in our community, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, chief. Item number ten, recognition of interim director finance Cheryl Davenport for her service that she provided to the Town of Trophy Club.
Right. Good evening again, mayor and councilmembers. Tonight I have the privilege of honoring Cheryl Davenport. Cheryl came to Trophy Club highly recommended through Strategic Government Resources as an interim finance director, and she didn't disappoint. Cheryl's professionalism has been on display for us during our many visits in the office for our weekly meetings and through this process that we've been through here in our budget process. She kind of came at a really tough time period, right? So most interim folks don't generally have to step in in the middle of a budget process, but Cheryl has taken that on and done an excellent job with it. She was, she's got twenty-six years of experience in finance, but coming to Trophy Club with an unfamiliar budget process and unfamiliar system, she jumped right in and did just an outstanding job. So we couldn't be more proud of Cheryl. So Cheryl, thank you so much for your efforts, and we hope that you're not a stranger and need to keep coming around, and believe me, your phone's going to keep ringing because I have lots of questions as the interim town manager. So, council, any comments from council?
Cheryl, thank you so much. You really were quite a leader through our budget process. We really appreciate all the hard work and long hours that you spent for us. So on behalf of myself and the council, it is very much appreciated. So we have a little something for you also. Anybody else wish to say anything? You want to come up, Cheryl?
Thank you so much, because that was a big undertaking to jump into with all the changes, and you did a great job, and we so much appreciate it. Thank you.
Very much, yes. Cheryl, I'll go up here. We'll get a picture. I'll let interim town manager give you that, and I'll give you this, and you can step in the middle. We'll get a picture. Over to the sign. Consider to take appropriate action regarding a request for replat for the purpose of splitting one residential lot into two residential lots containing approximately point five, six, seven acres of land and generally located on the northeast corner of Palmetto Court and Oakmont Drive. So at this time, I'd recognize our town planner to introduce the item.
Good evening, mayor and council. The purpose of this item is to consider approval of a residential replat to split one lot into two on Palmetto Court. The strategic link for this item is nature and beautification to maintain town assets, services, and codes of ordinances that preserve the natural beauty of the town. To recap, the proposed replat splits the property at the corner of Palmetto and Oakmont, and it meets all the zoning or the town zoning and subdivision regulations. However, several neighbors spoke against this proposal at the P&amp;Z and council meetings and produced a petition and protest of the replat. The petition requires a supermajority vote, which means at least seventy-five percent or six out of the seven council members must vote in favor of the replat if it's to be approved. P&amp;Z unanimously approved the replat in June, and town council continued the public hearing in July, so staff could hold a neighborhood meeting with nearby residents. The neighborhood meeting was held on August fourteenth, and residents left understanding that plat approval is a ministerial duty per state law, and residents have the authority to enforce the covenants and restrictions because the town can only enforce town ordinances. At the August twenty-seventh meeting, council closed the public hearing and referred this item to today's meeting to provide time for the legal issues between neighbors regarding the CNRs to be resolved. The proposed replat conforms to the state law as well as the town's subdivision and zoning ordinances, and staff recommends approval. Now available for questions.
Thank you. I have Mayor Portem Jensen who wishes to speak.
It's been the, probably the most difficult case we've had brought before us my time on council. I'm friends with somebody on the street, and yes, that comes into play whenever you're looking at anything. Every decision we make, we have bias in decisions we make. But you also have to look at the law, and we have to look at the town ordinance, and our duty is to follow the town ordinance. And after, we've had many, many discussions, but nothing has been proven. Otherwise, we must follow town ordinance. Based on that, I make a motion to approve case RP-19-01.
So I have a motion by Mayor Portem Jensen to have a second. I'll second it. The matter's before, so for clarification, because it requires six out of seven vote, we're missing one council member. That means it has to do what for a vote?
Five out of seven.
Actually, our ordinance specifically says all council members, so all six of you present would have to vote in favor.
It's of the body.
Pardon?
It's of the body, not of the member present.
Of the body?
In the ordinance.
Not the present. Okay? So that means we'd have to have everybody vote affirmatively tonight because we have six here.
For affirmative vote, yes.
All right. All right. Do we have any other more discussion about it? Sean?
Yeah, I just wanted to say something too, because when I first looked at this, it just didn't seem right. I'm friends with a handful of real estate attorneys. I talked to two different ones, and they both gave me the same answer. I was disappointed in the answer. I'm disappointed in the way that we have to vote. But I feel like we've done as much due diligence as we can to do what we can for the citizens, and I think it's something that we need to, we need to figure out. I don't know how to, I don't know how to figure it out, but we need to figure something out where the town's not crippled by semantics.
Any other discussion? I don't see anyone else seeking the floor. We didn't have anybody turn in to speak, did we Lisa?
No, ma'am.
All right. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of approving case RP-19-01, please show your hands. It is unanimous of the people present, so it does get six affirmative votes. All right, we will move on to item number twelve. Discussion of items for future agendas to include agenda items for consideration on the October twenty-second, 2019 council agenda and items from the town council future agenda list. So pages one eighty-six and one eighty-seven of your packet is the next council meeting tentative agenda. Does anybody see anything they want to change or add to this agenda? Don't see anyone wishing to do so. All right, then I'll call your attention to page one eighty-eight and one eighty-nine, which is our future agenda list. And are there any changes to this? Does anyone wish to add the request that was made tonight about consideration of the overnight parking permit process? Oh, I have people wanting to speak. Okay, Philip, I'm sorry.
No, I would like to task the town attorney and the planning department to come, to come back to us with a change in ordinance on a ministerial duty so that citizens are not signing a petition over something that we have no control over, because I think it disenfranchises citizens who sign the petition thinking that we can do something when ministerially we can't. And so I think there needs to be a review of that ordinance and perhaps a change, and so.
In the protest ordinance?
Correct. Over the, over anything that we would have ministerial, we have to have ministerial duty. It, it, it just to me disenfranchises citizens to want, yeah. Thanks.
I think, I think I understood.
All right, so we want to add that as an item nine on future agenda list, and once they've done some work, bring it back to us, Philip. Would that be okay? All right, and Sean, you wanted to speak.
Yeah, I want to add the revision that Jeremy Ramsbottom proposed to the park.
Jeremy?
Jeremy?
Jeffrey.
Jeffrey. What did I say? Jeremy? Jeffrey. Whatever his name is. He knows who it is.
We know who you mean.
Is he gone? Okay, good.
I'll second that.
Thanks.
All right, so you want the issue of overnight parking permits to come back to us?
Please.
All right. All right, anybody else? All right. So that would take us, I think.
Mayor, do you have any specific direction for the overnight parking ordinance, just as stated by Mr. Ramsbottom, or would you rather?
I emailed you something?
Okay. I'll follow email.
From my standpoint, in my memory, number one, we didn't have a lot of people that actually had permits when we looked at this before, so it wasn't hundreds, it was less than twenty, I think, or something like that, that had permits.